This is easy to get rid of you and fix this problem.
Let me hand you a piece of document lady. This is nuts. This is crazy. Here, I want you to have this. It's another school district that quelled this and made a difference. There's no, let me just, please. I got interrupted thirty years in the Department of Corrections. I don't appreciate that. I will let you speak when I'm finished. So let me finish, please. There are a lot of concerns here that need to be voiced. They need to be listened to. We're all willing to do this civilly, outside. We could do it in the stadium. We can all be heard. And we can hear what your concerns, your voice. You want the voice also. But these things need to be done.
You send the students out during the day for, to take their masks off to get fresh air for ten minutes? You can't come outside and give us ten minutes?
My son is no longer enrolled in your school anymore. As of today, he is officially cyber charter school.
There's a lot of concerns we want to address.
There's a lot of students because mine's gone.
This is ridiculous. They won't listen to the taxpayers.
We can come here to be ignorant.
Well, I need to call the county commissioners.
We need to just go in. It's our building. There's no reason why we cannot go into this building.
Get it to the news, they won't let us in. Do we start speaking?
Can we do like one speaker at a time?
One officer, if that's what we're gonna do on the.
You mean Troy?
If we do one speaker at a time, that speaker needs to have a witness.
No, I'm not gonna touch. I'm not taking my hands out of my pocket.
Exactly right, exactly. We're gonna clear the door and, and in the pocket.
Right.
Not everybody has that capability.
Okay, I have two band students that need to get through here, please.
Okay, go ahead, kid.
Is she walking away? Okay, are we going in? Excuse me. Guys, excuse me.
They don't wanna hear anything else.
Come on, come down. Stay together.
Thank you.
Everybody together, come on.
Thank you.
Everyone together.
Come on down, Greg. Thank you, people.
Everybody together.
You can't lock us all.
They can, but the jail can be pretty.
Yeah, whatever.
They'll let us sit here, but we can talk in the A.C. for a while. It'd be all right. They're gonna learn something. They're gonna learn about Mifflinburg people.
If they don't, if they don't start the meeting, we'll have our own meeting. We'll have our own speakers and we'll record it and then we'll.
Post it.
Post it, yeah.
I just wanna say one thing. When I came in and signed in, I made an X. And the reason why I made an X is because I graduated from Mifflinburg School.
Thank you for leaving.
You're welcome.
How'd you get us in?
I just walked in. I know that they can't arrest us, so that's. I think they're just not gonna have a meeting.
They won't, they guarantee you, McClintock will not show up here or I'll be shot.
Hey, we need to record this and have people go out and speak.
Yep.
Right there.
I have it.
So with that, they're changing the meeting at the last minute. That feels to me like another right to know request.
Right.
A right to know request of what credible threats were made. I've sent several emails to the school board and never once did I make a threat.
I talked to Mifflinburg Police Department and, and the Mifflinburg School.
So let me.
School Resource Officers, yep.
And, and both assured.
So you want an update on what's going on?
What's going on, according to you?
What's going on, according to me?
Yeah, I really, I'm so weirdly involved in this.
I understand.
I can't believe it, but anyway.
Okay, so we got here a quarter till they came out and said they weren't gonna have, they weren't gonna have the meeting live. They're gonna, they're switching the meeting to remote. And anyone who wasn't already signed up to speak wouldn't be able to speak. Anyone who wasn't able, already signed up for that. So.
It's a travesty, yes.
We've already acknowledged, they've already acknowledged they can't actually do anything about us being here. And so I came in and everyone followed.
And now here we are.
If they don't, if they don't come back for the meeting, we're gonna have our own meeting and record it in a few minutes. And just have all the same speeches without the school board present.
Okay. I'll figure it, I'll figure it.
Correct.
Except for you can't be in a school, which is why I disarmed before I entered the school.
Actually, you can be. If, if you have a fear for your life.
You have a fear for, I don't have a fear for my life. I would have to have a justifiable fear for my life.
But they're still gonna arrest you and you're gonna have to hire a board.
Correct.
And spend money.
And spend money.
You should probably ask for someone from the police department to tell us what the credible threat was. Because we sit in an auditorium and it should be addressed. They should tell us now what the credible threat was. We should have details, write me out.
Well, you can go ask if you want.
At such and such a time, all these people were here peacefully waiting to be in the meeting and they refused to have the meeting.
Yep.
I don't think the meeting's happening.
No, that's what they're gonna do.
Right.
Did you hear that?
What?
He just, Carl just said that someone couldn't find the Zoom link for the meeting tonight.
Right.
I have to be at work at seven forty-five tomorrow, I don't really care. I'll call my employees and be like, I'm gonna be late.
Are we ready to?
What time is it? Is it seven thirty?
It's seven thirty-two.
No, the meeting officially is supposed to start at seven thirty? Yep, because I looked up the times.
Oh, they're hiding.
Yep.
Behind the screen.
No, they're probably in another room in the building.
I know you probably have all this, I'll just give you what I made today. Four gas meters. Yeah.
Seventy? Okay.
All right, well.
Seventy people here. No, school board meeting. Except for they can't.
We have to be careful though, because they probably are recording this.
Okay, so are we.
I'm recording it.
We can accidentally say something that we don't mean out of laughter.
Record something that they set up that they bagged on. Go ahead and record it. Turn a camera.
Should we get started?
Yeah, might as well.
Should I leave it?
Go ahead. All you do. All you.
You wanna? You wanna use my phone and record?
Hey, you know what? I watched a video of where they wanted to do a mask thing and they, they just went up and filled the seats with the people who were willing to then become school board members because the school board members were left.
Yeah, pretty much they, they actually vacated their seats by not doing their job and having this meeting they scheduled today. They vacated their seats.
Yep.
And they won't even hear it sound. Well, let's take their signs down.
They know their names are ours.
Put an X there. That way I can read it.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm going to make a little announcement here. I appreciate all of you who came tonight. Obviously, our school board doesn't appreciate all of you who came. Just to recap, we were met at the front doors by the superintendent and the head of the board, Wendy, and told that they were moving the meeting to eight o'clock, that we would, they would not be having the meeting in person because of the presence of students. Have you, any of you seen any students except for the two that came?
There's a student there, there's a student there.
Students who came in, right? And.
Two students.
So students are around the property, but they're not in this room unless they chose to be.
There's three students that I count in this room, four.
So.
Four. Do any of the school students here feel threatened in any way?
I had them do, Mr. Strausberg would read and let me speak. I was trying to express how I was feeling about being able to come in for bands every Tuesday and Thursday without a mask. But these parents couldn't come in here and sit down. I'm running around the school, touching everything, and they're just coming in here to sit down.
So I guess our only alternative is to, I know a lot of you came prepared to speak. I think you ought to be given a chance to speak. And the school board is not gonna hear it, but we're gonna record it. And we'll post it on Facebook, on social media, and hopefully some of them will listen to it. Because you're. You deserve to be heard. So I, I think we should just do this in an orderly fashion, just like we would have done if they had decided to stay and face us. Non-threatening as we are, and so just come up one by one, try to limit your time to maybe four or five minutes so we can get a lot of people through. But let's, let's take up, use our time wisely and make the points that we want these board members to hear.
Can we say pledge allegiance to the flag first, please?
Absolutely.
Let's do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's first?
I'd like to say some.
Come on to the front and project your voice so everybody can hear.
A lot of you folks don't know me, my name's Ken Mitstifer. I had two sons that went to this school many years ago. I'm in my late sixties. I paid taxes to this school district. I'm here to voice a few opinions and I'll make it rather quick. I have a real quick story first and foremost. There was a student here back in twenty eighteen that got into a lot of trouble. Got suspended from this school. Got in trouble, had a parole officer, had to do community service. We have an equine program for veterans and children of special needs. The parole officer reached out to us for this young person to work off their community service in our barn. This young person, student of this school, came and did so, and did so rather well. And in my gratefulness for this young person, I wrote a letter and in cursive writing. I slid it across the table. This person has graduated from this school. Looked at the letter, I said, what do you think? Slid it back over to me. Ken, I can't read that. That's how bad things have gotten with our government and with our school system. They don't care about the schools anymore. When this young person couldn't read cursive writing for exemplary letter that I wrote in, in this person's behalf, because of the job this person did to help this person out, this child out. Our school system has been failing us for a long time. And all they care to do is control everything. I had two grandchildren, three grandchildren actually, that went to school here. All three of them are dedicating their lives in the Air Force. I'm damn proud of them. I've paid taxes to this school board for many, many years and I continue to do so. I have a grandson that's five years old that's autistic. He's not even on the scale. They can't figure him out. How in the world is the government gonna put a mask on that child? Thank you, folks.
Who's next?
I'll go. I was gonna come in here tonight and give a message to the school board, all the people that came out.
Carl, you're gonna need to speak up, I don't think that mic is on.
My name's Carl Emery. I was gonna come in here tonight and give a message to everybody that came out. Thank you all, thank the school board members for taking the time to hear us. My message is gonna be short and sweet. As a community, we can never expect to heal the wounds that we have with each other by winning battles with our neighbors. The only way we can ever expect to heal this community and make a better future for our children is through truth and grace. And the actions that are being taken place right now is not helping that.
I don't know who's walking by that exit door over there, but there were probably about ten feet, sets of feet that just walked by that door.
Probably the whole entire committee.
Could be.
They're allowed.
They're allowed. It's all right, we're holding the meeting without them.
My name is Catherine Yoder. Hi, I have severe PTSD from wearing a mask due to childhood trauma. Severe PTSD. Because of this severe trauma from my childhood, I decided long ago that I would not have children. So I am here to speak for the children that I never had. There's a document, a P.A. General Assembly document that states restricting a child's breathing is child abuse.
Yep.
Child abuse is rampant in central Pennsylvania. It's rampant. Child abuse, sex abuse, rape, satanic ritual abuse. ResearchPennsylvaniaHasASecret.com and you will see that a lot of documentation has been put together, a lot of investigation, by a gentleman named Russ Disdorff. In his investigation, he states that the local agencies are involved in covering up the abuse. These same agencies are trying to blatantly abuse your children by forcing a mask. Don't let it happen. Thank you.
We're gonna have to hold the phone, he's going first. I mean, I can hold the phone out, it's just gonna be a real lovely angle. It's already chubby enough, let's not make it worse. Okay.
So, my name's Robert Blankenship. My name's Robert Blankenship.
Anybody, parents, band, parents, they're letting kids out for just a while?
No.
So my professional background is mixed gas, deep air. I feel that I'm an expert in gases. So with that said, I'll just start with Title Twenty-three, Chapter Sixty-three, Subpart A, Sub-something-eight-five. But it states, child abuse is Pennsylvania state law. Their definition of child abuse, it says under B-one, the term child abuse shall mean intentionally, knowingly, or recklessly doing any of the following. Subsection five, eight-five, interfering with the breathing of a child, period. That's Pennsylvania's definition of child abuse. Now, there's others, but the breathing gas, I just highlighted. I had handouts and probably passed the posters as you came in. I did a four gas meter test with Steve Warner, Mifflinburg House Company Fire Chief. And I videoed him, some of you might have copies of it, I don't know. But the oxygen levels dropped to as low as seventeen point two percent and went as high as eighteen point eight percent. OSHA, the United States Department of Labor, mandated oxygen levels not to drop below nineteen point five percent. I already know the argument, well, the air outside the mask is more than nineteen point five percent. Well, the air inside the mask is not more than nineteen point five percent. So with that said, let me get my phone. I said it earlier, I just wanna, I wanna repeat what I wrote down. Anyone, as you know, defined by Pennsylvania state legislature, interfering with the breathing is defined as child abuse. Anyone who's going to enforce a mandate by the governor who has overstepped his bounds, anyone who's going to enforce that mandate is complicit and accessory to child abuse.
Yep.
Thank you, God bless and may.
My name's Brittany Baker. Most of you know me on Facebook. I currently have a seven-day ban because Brittany is a bad girl. Oh, I'm loud. You really don't need me on the microphone, it's gonna blow your eardrums out. So, most of you know what I have to say, but some of you may not. Kind of along with what you're saying about child abuse, domestic abuse, all of that, the mandates, the quarantining, the masks and the division that they're pushing on all of us. We know it was coming. History has a funny way of repeating itself. We've seen this time and again if we actually paid attention in school. It's just a mask, no big deal, right? It's just the Star of David, no big deal. It's on your clothes, what does it matter? Pretty soon that'll turn into, it's just a shock. Why can't you get vaccinated for the good of everyone else? Reminds me of an abusive husband. Been there, done that. I only did it for your own good. I didn't have a choice. Why can't you just listen and obey me? Sounds exactly the same. I understand our administration has pressure from both sides. Clearly, they don't like the pressure that we're putting on them because they ran and hid. I understand that they're under threat to follow orders that they're getting hit from on every front. I get it, I get it. I do not envy their job sometimes, I really don't. What doesn't sit right with, I can pretty much guarantee most of the parents here, is that they've chosen to execute the mandates in an unrealistic and unfair way. There was no consistency, there was no truth. How many of us were lied to by the principals or the administration?
Or the security officers.
Or the security officers. Flat out lie, you prove it in an email. Other schools handled it significantly better without students being excluded, segregated. My daughter was sent to the gym. Her personal belongings were taken from her. And without police presence. I'm sorry, my brother was the chief of police in Point Township, Norrie, for twenty years. Josh was flipping out when I told him. Now granted, he lives in Tennessee, he can't really do a whole lot for us. The board were all emailed a letter from a civil rights attorney as to the legal enforceability of the mandate. Just following orders, just doing what they've been told, sounds eerily like the same result Stanley Milgram, who was a Yale University psychologist, well-respected in his field, discovered when conducting the experiment to determine if normal people, normal people, would inflict harm on another human being because they were following orders. That's exactly what we're seeing here.
It's not an order.
It's an agenda.
Exactly. But that's the response that we've gotten. We're doing what we're been told, we're following orders, we're following the mandate. It's all the same thing. They're inflicting harm on another human being, our children, because they're following orders. Quarantining and masks and vaccines and mandates had nothing to do with the virus. It has everything to do with dividing us into an us versus you. Divided, we fall. It'll be pushed to the point that people who think masks and vaccines and mandates will flip on those who don't. Where are they? Those who think that it's a good idea to proceed to try and enforce them will unto others, will agree that those who, us who don't are dirty, subhuman, and not worth equal treatment. They've already done it to our children. We're seeing it right now with us fighting like mama bears. If you don't know what the term mama bear is and where it comes from, look it up. Right now, all of you fathers in this scenario are mama bears. I'm sorry, it's a female bear in this scenario, if you don't wanna be the dad. The administration touts one hundred percent compliance, but do they really have it? They don't. They forgot Breonna. They ignore Paul and Ethan and Rebecca. How many of our children, Chance, Ben, Kayden, Emma, Bradley and Gordon? And not to mention all of the children that I don't have named here. It's not a hundred percent compliance, it doesn't sound like that to me. They don't have that fit in with what they look like. We want the school staff to be able to do their jobs, to teach our children, not to dictate to them. We want every parent to have the opportunity to decide what's right for their child. We're the parents. The state's using fear and intimidation and falsified numbers to divide us. Think about it, last year, how many deaths did they have to remove from the totals because they weren't real COVID deaths? How many of them? Your fears and concerns should not dictate to me what I have to do, just like my fears and concerns shouldn't have to dictate to you what you must do or what you must do. That's my fear, my problems to deal with, your fears are your problems to deal with. It should not control my life, my life shouldn't control yours.
It's called individual choice.
Exactly. Personal responsibility. Study your history. If you really believe in masks and quarantine, which clearly most of us don't, they do. If they did that for every virus, did you do that for the annual flu? Did you do that for swine flu in the last pandemic? Or do it because you're told?
Didn't even hear about the flu last year.
Exactly. What happened to flu deaths? They magically disappear?
They were counted as COVID.
Exactly. They were counted as COVID. Why aren't we scrubbing the desks, the doorseats, the handles?
When it's airborne.
When it's airborne, for the most part. It's all about droplets. It's funny, you're talking about Mifflinburg Fire Department? I was volunteering there for a few years. One of the things that I remember learning about was the size of fire-related particles and how a cloth mask wasn't gonna do anything to protect you from it. If you look up the size of a fire-related particle, it's bigger than the COVID particle. So it's like saying, this doorway won't stop an adult from going through, but it's sure gonna stop a toddler from running through. That makes no sense. The liability and responsibility for a child's health should be on the parents to decide, no one else. You do you, I'll do me. Quarantining because someone was exposed with no mask or quarantining because you were, or not quarantining because you were wearing a mask, is Pavlov's dog ringing the dinner bell, waiting for a response. I urged the board to make a motion to put an end to this nonsense. Clearly, they're not here, so congratulations, they're as well-trained as fighting.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'm Greg, I'm from Mifflinburg and first thing I wanna say is that your body secretes all types of toxins and coughing is one of them. So if you wear a mask and you cough once in it, you could have the Corona or any type of other viruses in the mask. So wearing the mask, you're literally re-digesting or re-ingesting the toxins. Your body releases it in many ways and wearing a mask is counterproductive.
Thank you.
I thank you all for being with school members. I had a daughter who graduated here in 1997. She had cystic fibrosis. She had a immune deficiency, but she never got sick and never died of anything else but the CF. She wanted to go out and she even became an EMT. That's something a lot of people want to do, but that was her dream. But what she died of was suffocating dry. She drowned on dry ground because she could not breathe. What would she do if she would have had to wear a mask all that time? And just remember, if you look for the government to take care of you, you got a problem.
Yep.
Well, I think we need to get the government out of our souls, out of our healthcare, and the hell out of our homes. They don't belong there, and they work for us, and we don't work for them.
Troy Zimmerman. Add this for the board. Guess I'll read it to you guys.
Yeah, I had to readjust because it wasn't directed at the board. I'm like, "Wait, that doesn't make sense."
The fact is, this should have never gone this far. The board voted for a mask-optional health and safety plan that was best suited for our community. We were told that Harris Group would stay out of this and not interfere with the decisions may be made at the local level. Then, without warning, our governor reversed course. This wasn't fair to you, and it wasn't fair to us parents who had to make last-minute decisions to protect our children. We aren't asking you to go against the order, but don't go beyond it. Reasonable exceptions can and should be made to accommodate parents without requiring a note from a doctor. The original order from the Department of Health does not require a doctor's approval. The Department of Education may have provided their opinion about how the exceptions should be handled, but that is simply their opinion.
Right.
This is not how the order from the Department of Health was written and not how it reads right now. The original order from the Department of Health does not require a doctor's approval. The Department of Ed-- oh, sorry. This holds no legal weight. I know your solicitors are recommending you adhere to the commands of the governor. They would like you to take the safest route, but the safest route is not always right. We are not in the same place we were at last year when masking was required. Right now, students can go to Beaver Stadium and sit shoulder to shoulder with 80,000 to 100,000 other fans without a mask on. We can go to Walmart or the grocery store, eat at a restaurant, the county fair, all without a mask. It makes no sense, and it is in fact cruel, to blindly enforce this on students only when they are in classrooms. Please have the courage to work with us. Obviously, they don't. There are experts on both sides that argue for and against masking. Let the parents decide. That was my only topic. I also wanted to speak on equity.
Yes.
We had a meeting last week on this equity. I don't know if you're all familiar with that. The Equity Committee needs to be disbanded. There's an attempt being made to apply the principles of critical race theory through equity. It's not just happening here. This is going on all over the country. Board members, please wake up to this. There is a consorted effort by the extremists in the PSBA to push this ideology all over the state. Please look into it. Do you? The things that are happening in schools around the country before it goes too far here. This isn't a spontaneous attempt to fix a problem here in Mifflinburg as they portray. This is a nationwide political effort to fundamentally alter the way our children think.
Yes, it is.
Yes, absolutely.
The satanic evilness is very, very deep. And so, tonight, for the first time, we did pray outside, and that was amazing, and that's what should happen on a regular basis. These meetings should be started with prayer. So, anyway, my child is in-- My child is in second grade. As of today, he is officially unenrolled from here and enrolled in CCA. This is a sacrifice that I chose to make, and I am willing to sacrifice my job and everything to make this happen. And so, I entitled mine, "What sacrifices are you willing to make for the good of all the children?" And that is directed to the school board members who are not here listening.
And we can see how much they care about our kids.
Exactly. Exactly. So, I looked up our founding fathers, and I've heard this story, and so I looked it up to make sure I was giving it right tonight. But they stood up for what was right to the death of themselves. There was 56, I think, that signed it, and there were five captured in war. They all died. They were tortured, but they lost, their houses were burned, and their family members were killed. And that was all just for standing up, for signing the Declaration and standing for what was right. Mrs. Nkintop keeps telling us that she took this job because she wants to stand for what is right. How is putting a mask on a child so they can't breathe what is right? I said last week at the meeting that we had, "Is it not funny that right now, the only people that are making our kids, making masks an issue are the schools?" There's, like the gentleman said, "You can go basically anywhere without a mask on, and no one's going to say anything to you." What is it about the schools? It's where our children are. Right last year, they targeted the elderly and the sick. This year, they are targeting the children. So, we really, really need to stand strong on this. Like I said, the satanic-ness is really deep, and going after our children, I don't know where you guys are all at on that, but trust me when I tell you, depopulation is where this is going.
Yep. Absolutely.
So, I'm just very glad tonight is amazing. This is the biggest group yet. Thank you all for coming, and I hope that whenever they choose to come back and listen to us, that we get to do this again. Sunday, my son, he is autistic, so he has difficulty with school in general. He was asking to do homeschool, and then he got sick. I kept him home until he was better. So, anyway, when he was able to come back to school the day before, he goes, "I like second grade. You don't have to wear masks there." I was like, "Sorry, buddy, but they changed that." And so, you can't, he's not coming back to school, as I said before. What did I write? So, like I said about Mrs. Nkintop wanting to make the right decisions, I do not trust any of these school board members to make the right decision for our children at all.
Not after, not one of them has the decency to show up. Not a single one of them could be bothered to show up.
So, I wanted them to stand for, to stand for what is right, to stand for freedom, freedom of choice, freedom of liberty.
The pathetic part of the whole evening--
So, we're talking about freedom, and he leaves.
Uh-huh.
The pathetic part of the whole evening, love. Everyone here is willing to go to the football stadium or sit on the freaking lawn for crying out loud and discuss these masks. They wouldn't even do that. That shows their concern.
Well, I believe it's all been planned. I don't think that the governor changing this was a whoopsie on their part. I think it was planned, and it's a whoopsie on us because we're the ones that were thrown unruled, but they knew it was coming. I'm pretty sure that they just did that, "We'll make it optional to get everybody into school," and now here you are.
I heard the McQuarrie District, one of the people on the voting didn't show up, so they couldn't vote. So, they're going to do whatever they can not take care of this. They're going to avoid it and avoid it.
Drag it out. Let someone else make the call.
Yeah, and they're hoping that we'll give up. What we need to do is draw more people in on this.
Yeah.
And let them realize it's about freedom of choice. We live in America.
Let's let Tina--
Oh.
Go ahead, Tina.
Hello, my name is Tina Pogus, and I have two of my three children at the school, and they're coming out. Okay? I wrote something for the board, and they're not here to listen, so try to bring it across to your attention. Some of you may agree, some of you may not. That's okay. We all have the right to that.
Yep.
Mr. Dan Lipton and the board members of the Mifflinburg area school district, if you happen to hear this, this is for you. First and foremost, I'd like to thank every single one of you, moms, dads, aunts, uncles, concerned citizens, for coming out tonight to show your support for our children. A lot of us, all of us, most of us are here tonight about the mask mandate. Okay? It's affecting our children and our community, and in fact, I find it, it's timing a little bit concerning. All summer, we went maskless. We went shopping. We went family vacations. We were outside of our state, outside of our hometown, all maskless. Everything was fine. Okay? We start school under somewhat normal conditions, but no masks. Okay? Kids are enjoying school. We're in a few weeks. All of a sudden, one Friday afternoon, I believe it was, the big bad wolf decides he's going to disrupt our community, our schools, from ages two years old to staff teachers. Okay? No warning, no state of emergency, just an evil bad wolf overstepping his boundaries again, targeting our children. They're threatening. Okay? They're bribing. They're offering money, incentives, okay, for schools to uphold this. It's all wrong. But the schools, eh, money talks. Okay? Uh, let's see, I'm skipping around here, so I'm sorry. My children, they're mine. They're not the government's, they're not the school districts, they're not wolves, they're not any one of these unprecedented board members. Okay? They're mine. I make the decisions for them. Okay? I live in the United States of America. I live in a free country that many men and women have fought selflessly for. And I'm not about to go down without a fight.
Neither are we.
Sorry. Well, I find it, I lost it. I apologize. I gave my speech to them at the door when they wouldn't let us in.
Take your time.
That's okay. We had it all addressed to the school, but we all had to change it up.
We pay for this building.
Okay. Masks. Masks are useless. In fact, there are many studies that prove the harmful effects of having a child wear a mask or a facial shield. There are adverse physical effects, emotional, and psychological effects. Masking children and adults takes away from the important beneficial connection children need between each other and their teachers and adults. They can't read lips. They can't learn facial expressions, learn how to interact with others and more. Imagine not seeing someone's facial expressions. Children need these things for their emotional and mental health, and you're depriving them of that. Okay? Take the scenario vice versa. Teachers, okay? You might have some children. I was one of them. I did not ask for help in school. If I didn't understand, I didn't understand. I was not about to raise my hand and ask. Okay? A lot of good teachers can see the facial expression of a child to know if they are understanding--
Good point.
--and comprehending what they're learning. If you put a mask on a child, you can't see their face. Okay? Now, I have a few personal questions for the board. They weren't supposed to answer them aloud, and I'll read them to you. Okay? One of the questions was, "Do you really feel that living in a free country, the government can or should have the right to tell you what to wear, when to wear it, who should wear it, what style to wear, and how to wear it?" I had kind of put in here, if your answer to that was yes, because they seem to feel that we need to mask up. I suggest to take a history review course, open your eyes, and your Bible, because if you want to sit back and allow the government to control your every move and thought, you are in for one hell of a surprise. Men and women, some in here tonight, have fought for our freedom. And if they are willing to give that up, we don't need them. We don't need them on our school board. Okay? We do not want them in charge of our children. They are to be putting the better interests of our children first and foremost.
Yep. Get it out, bud.
Not above, my--
Yeah.
Not above. Our children are in their hands for how many hours a day? Seven hours a day?
Seven, give or take.
Okay? They are to be put, they chose this career, the teachers, whatever. They chose. Right? They need to be putting our children first and foremost.
They need to understand that these children are the building blocks of our future. Do it right.
Do you understand that why they try to manipulate their bodies and control them?
Yep. Absolutely.
Why even took all the trades out of schools? Why did they take curse writing out of schools over 10 years ago? Why are they destroying the curriculum?
My second question to the board was, "Can you honestly say that that mask, that piece of fabric, that piece of plastic covering your face is capable of protecting you from a microscopic virus?"
Eh, no.
Microscopic, you can't see it. Okay?
I don't even know what it is.
Thinking that that mask is going to protect you from a microscopic virus is like me thinking that my sweater is going to protect me from a gunshot wound. It's not.
Yep, yep.
That mask is going to do you no good. It is only going to cause them harm.
And they're supposed to be intelligent?
Okay. I had some others here. I'm going to try to cut it a little short here. Um, we had an equity meeting last week. I know another gentleman brought this up as well this evening. Let's see. Bear with me a minute. Okay? Equity. Part of the equity is giving every student, regardless of race, religion, medical, mental, physical, et cetera, fair treatment and the right to an education. Okay? They offer e-learning, is what I was told. "Oh, you can do the e-learning program. You can do these other things." That is not an accessible accommodation for all parents and all students.
That's not an equitable education.
My children need an in-person instruction. They want to be here. I have a child who refuses to come to school because he is terrified to come here.
Yep, yep.
Okay? That is so wrong, and a child should feel safe in a school.
Let's put coronavirus into effect real quick. Um, my wife and I have a lot of things that belong to my parents, her parents, my grandparents and her grandparents. I was going through the downstairs garage in our house and getting rid of a lot of things. I came across a bottle of Lysol that was probably 40, maybe 50 years old. On the back label of that bottle was something that they're calling new coronavirus.
We have it in us.
It was just her way of skirting issues and quelling situations and not answering any questions. That's all it is. It was all accounted for out.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
All right, let's hear it from the front.
Okay. Hello, Mifflinburg. My name's Floyd Howdyshel. Thank you all for coming tonight. It does my heart good. Happy to see how you did the first thing, you showed up for your community. You got to care.
You got a care and concern in your heart and you showed up to demonstrate it, thank you for it. Mifflin-Burg, you should be congratulated, tonight you leveled up. You learned about some powers that you didn't know we had. This ends when we peacefully, civilly disobey. We're gonna learn about the power of now. When they told us to leave tonight, we're not gonna have a meeting. Y'all learn that we don't have to just obey, we don't have to leave. We own the building, these are our children, there's no one that has greater concern. Thank you and congratulations for showing up and for learning about your new powers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm listening to the ball.
It's all good.
My name, you know me.
Like your shirt. Thank you.
Somebody said my zoo changed, I think let in soon, are they doing the zoo, are they doing it somewhere else if we don't know that?
Probably in the faculty room or.
Two minutes ago.
Let them do it.
They're all standing in all, so they're not in a room, they're just.
They're doing what they do best.
All of a sudden, I feel.
Alright, okay.
Y'all gentlemen. Sorry. Hi, my name's Andy, uh, I'm not Paul, thank you for not. That's the way this kind of started, I thought, but, um, on, on a not-so-light note, um, so the past week, I'm just gonna use my son, my children as the example, um, I leave it up to my children and every day, whether they want a mask, whether they not, they not want a mask, I have, um, a child that has some, I don't wanna say some disabilities, I guess, um, that do not prevent or do not allow him from wearing a mask, so you know, he's done our e-learning, but it's, it's not the best environment for him. Uh, my other son chose to, um, I have two that came and they, they, you know, the first day they were sent home, um, 'cause they come in, made sure they were present, ready, willing to learn, they were here, um, all of them, and, um, did you finally get that bug back there?
Oh my God!
Alright, anyway, um, so, the rest of the week, I am still at one child who did not want to, uh, wear the mask again, I asked him to go in, wear the mask again, sit down, make your presence known that you are accounted for, ready, willing to learn, and every single day. Till Thursday, I think there was one other child in there, I don't know if there was anymore, uh, even Monday, um, I, he did it one more time and we talked about it earlier, I did not want to, um, pull him from an in-person education. I absolutely was against it from, I said, one night, it was, one night, it's, you know, we can't continue to do this, I turned in my exemption form, it was denied. I tried to record the, the, uh, the whole, um, interaction with, uh, the principal, um, he said, nope, I don't agree, so obviously I had to turn that off, um. My son has done tremendously well academically, um, you know, performing excellence, period, whatever it is, up at the PSSAs, Keystone, et cetera, a straight A student up until last year, when we were all forced to change the setting, change the, the way that we're educated. We were all in kind of, eh, what's this all about? Nobody knew what it was about. So, a lot of us complied, a lot of us did what we were to do just out of courtesy, but I still think, a lot of us still do, we're asked to, uh, respect authority, respect, there's never been respecting and just compliance, correct? Um, and I, I can guarantee every single ninety-eight percent, if not all, of these students in this district, when asked to give respect, will do that for whatever reason, but, um, I think we've all taught our children, um, there's no, but that hundred percent, uh, compliance, as Brittany had stated, that, uh, it's, it's not true. Um, so, anyway, again, you know, I was gonna make, I didn't, I just let me rephrase that, I was not making my child do that, again, I let him up to it every day to make the choice whether to come in, remove the mask, et cetera, um, but he just got discouraged as well. So, the point I'm trying to make, thank you for showing up tonight, um, there's quite a few more, but where were we? And where were we in the halls this past week? We, I feel, um, that civil obedience only works in numbers, is what I'm saying, so, uh, many of us immediately pulled out, or maybe it was because of other reasons, um, but I, I don't feel that there was enough to even make it worth the while of the administration that it was gonna sit, in fact, they, they let them sit in the caf, or the cafeteria, then the ophelia, um, they weren't gonna, they didn't call me, I actually had to call them on multiple occasions, um, to know when, you know, my son was texting me, um, as far as the teacher that referred to the non-compliant students as the, um, term, doesn't matter the term, it was still incorrect, um. I received an email from that teacher, um, supposedly apologizing, she apparently did not want it to be a political statement, it wasn't meant. Uh, and now I'm gonna switch the other side, play devil's advocate here. Um, I let, I, I try to ask questions, I try to find out, I try to look at all sources of information, I don't, you know, try to indicate myself on many different opinions and whatnot, and I think that's what our kids need to be taught, I think that's what we need to do. Um, the problem is that all sources of being, from one side, are being censored and diminished, and you, again, there was a comment made on, on obviously the book of faces, that, uh, if I hear one more person or something about compare this to the Holocaust and something, they need to learn their history, it's, it's not that we're we're comparing it to the Holocaust itself, we're comparing it to the actions that led up to those events.
Yep.
And if you, you can say what you want, but if you can't see what's going on, look at Australia, look at New Zealand. If you can't see what's going on and it's not coming here slowly by surely, keep pushing the goalposts, goalposts back, goalposts, goalposts back, then y'all need to wake up. Wake up, America, wake up, Pennsylvania, wake up, Mifflin-Burg, and it, it, it's just ridiculous, I'm gonna kind of move on here, some of the other conversations, um, it's, it's almost like smoking back in the nineties or before that, you walk into a restaurant, bar, um, you could sit down, you could have your steak, you could smoke a cigarette, in fact, my attorney told me this, and he was, he was comparing it to this, uh, there's, and there's so many other, we look at our history and other things, but nothing compares to this, nothing that we have ever gone through compares to this. The inoculations, vaccinations that have been before us are not under these same circumstances.
Yep, yep.
Okay, and that's the excuse that they use, well, why not, just to be on the safe side, you know, and, and, but if you, if you take, yeah, it's okay to be on the safe side, but when is the safe side, you know, you can't live in a bubble forever. If this virus doesn't go through every single one of us at some point, I mean, I, I don't see how it's not the way it, 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 it goes. Whether it's the Delta, whatever variant comes next, um, and nobody, why can't we look at natural immunity? Why isn't everybody talking about these certain things? It, it, it's just all too weird. I challenge those of you who, um, still feel, you know, I'm not saying vaccine isn't safe or is safe, uh, there's studies out there, nobody knows, that's the point, nobody knows, so why take the risk? We do know the numbers as far as the epis, uh, the survival rate of the COVID, especially for our children, and that's what this is all about. The survival rate of our children does not deem the necessity of masking, vaccinations, et cetera. Why do we need to give up our child's rights to a fair education to
the children?
Just comply, just because somebody says so, for a survival rate that is phenomenal, okay? Um, and again, depending on the science, et cetera, what you listen to, um, natural immunity is better than the vaccine, again, there's, there's studies.
They're on Zoom.
And that's that.
Didn't you say eight o'clock too?
Yes, yes, she did.
And he's made twenty-five.
So, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end this here real quick, I just, the, the whole, um, devil's advocate, you know, there's, there's different you, you have, you know, they bring up, I'm just kind of giving the, the excuses that they give, you have to wear certain safety gear in a particular job, you have to do this and, and look at, um, oh, I said, there's never been a case prosecuted or brought, um, ruled on for respiratory illnesses. And then they brought, well, what about the AIDS, like, well, that's not a respiratory illness, so if you, if you see, again, they, they just want to twist and turn and it's just, in my book, we need to wake up.
Yeah.
We need to wake everybody else up, we need to stand up in solidarity, um, unite under one flag, oh, I have one, I have these thoughts on my head, I'm trying to come to me, um, unfortunately, they left, um, but during last week's, last week's equity meeting, when, um, Rob back there, like Chip said about, we, he's got a list of how many students are gonna pull their, their children out, and this is that, and we're here about equity and about being secluded or discriminated against or, or the hatred, and I hear almost every single, you know, I shouldn't say every single one of them, but at least four or five of them say, well, see you later, the hypocrisy is just ridiculous. And I don't know how we can come together as a country, I don't see how we can come together as a community, I don't know. And it's their word, it's ours, it's just, I don't see this going anywhere good, um, I'm losing hope and faith, and, uh, all we can do is is pray, and, um, I ask everybody to do that, so, sorry about the.
We need action too, we need action too.
Bottom line is, they need to sit down with everyone else and discuss this, and they were unwilling to do this.
But they look at us as a minority.
I wanted to say one thing to you, 'cause I'm not really that smart or really motivated, no, but I'm saying this, we need to call out, we need to advertise, we need to do something to bring more people, 'cause, you know, I just, I was fortunate that a young man that I know, uh, you know, shared it with me, and then I shared it with all my friends, so my point is, is we need to do more, there's more people, I think, you'd be surprised, we might be able to fill this auditorium.
What about the parents with students?
Yeah, I know, but I don't think a lot of them.
I know, I'm just saying it's great that the community gets behind it.
Yeah, yeah.
Again.
Yeah, no, no.
If there's only two or three students coming in and doing the civil disobedience, they're just gonna
Right, right, but there's a lot.
keep doing the same thing until, at A, we comply, or the child complies with the national.
We can watch it after. Right.
Anyway, so.
So how do you do that, how do you get, how do you reach out to other people?
I, I don't know if it's standing in a public place, you know, I, um, Mr. Alfred Garrett talked about, just a different subject, the female or lady that, uh, is being fired, uh, or was fired from the Union County Library, I don't know if y'all heard about this or know about this.
Yeah, yeah.
Why are we not standing with her in support of her?
Let me just mention something about that real quick, on Saturday, the library's having a huge event from, I think it's ten to four, you can look it up online, but they're having a huge event, they're asking the community, they're, they're, they're celebrating their new building renovation. How many of us will show up on Saturday and hold a sign for the person who got fired for religious discrimination? Who is, they rejected her, first they told her, oh, you have a religious exception, we want to see something from your pastor. She provided a letter from her pastor, they said, okay, well, we're gonna put you on part-time and eliminate your benefits. She said, no, I don't agree to that, and they said, they, they didn't actually respond, the next day they appeared and said, why are you here, you're fired. And they refused to give it to her in writing, that's the short answer. We need to be showing up day after day after day and talking to people, come Saturday, come to that community event, yes.
We need somebody to organize this, but another thing is, our healthcare people are literally losing their jobs too. A lot of people are not gonna be forced vaccinated, they're losing their jobs, and how do we do something? I can't figure this stuff out, but I'm willing to help if somebody tells me what to do.
We just, we have to support each other, we really, we have to support each other, they, they continue to do this, uh, somebody loses their job, we just have to be there for them, but, but honestly, God will bless us if we follow in his way. If, if this is what he wants from us right now to stand for our fight, this is our time to fight for our freedoms, if that's what God's asking us to do and making those sacrifices, he will provide, we just have to stay together.
I need to make a, real quick announcement, real quick announcement concerning the, the meeting, um, they're looking for people to go on Zoom, I guess they are not really allow public comments, so, uh, whether they're on your devices, et cetera, uh, if you guys want to travel soon, I don't know, they just want to shut us up. Oh, so they're saying they were not present.
I knew that would happen, the writing was on the wall from the beginning of the doors, so then they can say they.
Is there anyone in this room who's not registered though? Please raise your hand. One. Alright, we'll get you to the chair.
No, I'm sixteen.
Alright, is there anyone in here of age that is not registered though? That's awesome.
So they purposefully did not hold the meeting, but they're getting the building, holding the meeting. And if there's incredible pride, then they're allowing us in the auditorium. They're staying here.
We're having half a meeting, we're having half a meeting.
They told us the virtual meeting was changed to eight o'clock, but they didn't call it to order till eight twenty-five, purposely to exclude all of us from being able to jump on and comment.
Exactly.
Well, they told us that we couldn't come and if we, if we weren't pre-registered.
Correct.
Buffalo Township, Langston Township, and Berlin, is up for reelection? If anyone's concerned.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not saying what anybody.
Did do, but yeah.
I'm not, I'm not saying my position.
There are candidates.
I'm just letting you know who's up for reelection. You have to vote, vote.
Yeah.
I, I just, I think it's a good idea for you all to continue to meet like this without the board.
Yep, yep.
Meet in small groups, we wrote down our names on their list as we came in, they have a list of who we are. We should all have a list of who we are, we should know, know, know the people here, meet in small groups, then meet in larger groups, pull more people together. You don't need the board, shut up.
Can we?
If you're on Facebook, choose not on Facebook, if that's.
Alright, Will, you're up.
I'm up, okay. I'm Will Zimmerman, um, I wasn't gonna say the night, but what's said so far, I agree with one hundred percent, so I'm not gonna react to it. You guys did a great job, and I really like how many people are here, it's really humbling to see that many discern parents and taxpayers here to support each other. Thank you all for coming, but what does bother me tonight, the Constitution of the United States grants the citizenry the right to express their grievances to the gun in their body. We're here.
They're not.
We're there. We're there.
Hiding.
Everybody, persons, fill the chair up right at the tables, obviously shaming themselves.
Yep, yep.
Do they teach the Constitution in school anymore?
No.
Are they, are they example of it right now?
They don't teach it. They don't examine it anymore, Will.
Now.
They're example of Barack Obama.
Let me tell you this. I'm a Buffalo Township supervisor. And every once in a while, we get a hot topic. I think, you agree with me, happens all board meetings, right? And that, the room will be filled. And I'll guarantee you, if we all three supervisors get up and walk out, you never hear the end of it.
You and I haven't met yet. I'm one of the new planning board members.
Okay, but let me tell you, no matter how many people are at meetings, are meetings, they all, if they wanna speak, they have the right to get up and express their concerns to us. And that's where it should be here. Why is the school board any different than any other governmental body in the state or the whole United States of America? There are no difference to the rest of us. They, they should be there right now, hearing our grievances. That's all I gotta say, and thank you all for coming.
I, I just wanna let you know, but I don't know, I think you guys know the meeting's on and they are.
We have no way to even know.
No, I, I know, I'm just.
Where are they? If the meeting's on.
I haven't, I haven't left here.
Hiding?
They're in the outdoor.
But I'm just saying that.
Are they safe now?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, but they didn't give us. How, how are we supposed to get it all?
I, I don't, listen, I, I'm only being informational for y'all.
Yeah.
I just, if, if you, if you go to, for those of you that have, for those of you that have data, wifi, you know, potential, you can go to, I think, the district website, I think on the left-hand side, it does say. It does say, I think it does have the Zoom link there. I could be wrong. I'm giving you this turn, flag, small weather flag. This is the day that they turned their back on the people that elected them to do their job. I just want them to have that. We're the school. Fly. I'll check, I'll check to see. I'm just trying to give Carl the, the link there, and I'll try to see if I can find it myself.
Excuse me, sir, if you don't have that kind of advantage, that's what these meetings are for here, is for the people that don't have that kind of advantage, so they can come here to listen to the board.
I'm not here to argue with you. I'm, I'm, I'm just simply trying, I'm, I'm trying to share.
Let's not kill the message.
I know.
Are you scared? Are you threatened? Are you scared to be in the building?
I, I personally have not received any threats. In fact, I've been communicating with Mr. Emery on different things, and I appreciate the conversation, I do. I can't speak for others, Mrs..
Is the threat over?
What's that?
Is the threat over?
I don't know that, I, I really don't, okay?
Yeah, the building hasn't been cleared.
They're helping to scare people.
And, and I, I can't hear that, I can't, I can't.
Here, can you hold this?
Not, not that it's your responsibility, just pass it along.
I don't know what that means, I really don't. But I do know that.
Emails for.
I just, I just wanna recap really quickly what happened with the police. Because I don't want things to be, I mean, we're, we're upset about masks, we're upset about a lot of things here, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna miss what happened with the police. So. You show up at school and there's cops at your school. That makes you really concerned, doesn't it? Why are there cops standing outside the school when the students are going? So I had a parent who called the school. They talked to Dr. Lickel. They wanted to know what, why was someone, why did someone call the police? Why were the police there? Lickel said, he didn't call the police, but someone called the police because there was a credible threat. He said, the police, when they understood there was a credible threat, they sent the cops over. So guess what?
Yeah, the mayor.
That same, that same parent called the chief of police and said, hey, Dr. Lickel said that you guys had a credible threat. Is that true? The police chief laughed. The police chief laughed. No, that is not true. They called us, it wasn't Dr. Lickel, but they called us because they were concerned. But we don't have any evidence of a credible threat. So that night, we come here for the Equity Town Hall, and what happens? The same fellow that was in here earlier gathering that stuff, he's one of the resource officers, he comes out and says, we're not letting you in without a mask, according to Lickel. So we start discussing it with him, we start bringing up about the police. And what does, what does he say? He says, we didn't call the police, the police were just walking down the street, and we flagged them, and they, they, they just decided to come over. So I said, well, that's exactly not what the police chief said just a few hours ago. And he said, I don't care what the police chief said. I said, you don't care what the police chief says? He says, I don't care what the police chief says. Fortunately, the other resource officer, the one that was holding the door tonight as we came in, he steps up and he says, I called the police. Oh, really? So these two men apparently can't corroborate their own story. He says, I called the police. I said, why did you call the police? What was the credible threat? He said, oh, well, there, there was a principal that was zip-tied. I said, our principal was zip-tied? He said, no, 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 it was somewhere else in Pennsylvania.
Oh, my God!
This was said at the Equity, at the beginning of the Equity meeting.
Going on in the auditorium?
So that's, that's, this is the kind of people we're dealing with. They don't know the truth. They don't know how to tell the truth or say the truth. Yeah, I don't know. But they were handing out masks. The police chief said, they were here handing out masks. That is coercion, it's bullying, and just like Wendy said in her Facebook or TikTok post this past week, if you come, you will not be allowed to enter without a mask. Were we allowed to enter?
Yes, sir.
Apparently we were.
That's right.
These people do not know how to tell the truth. They only know how to bully and coerce. But like Mr. Howdeshale said, we have learned to say no. And us saying no will inspire others to say no, whether they're employees at Geisinger or the library or wherever they are. Enough is enough, we're done with mandates. No. Put your hands in your pockets, we're not gonna fight you, we're just gonna say no.
Here's a question for Ms. McClintock. If there was a so-called credible threat, why weren't there more of a police presence? Why wasn't something else done?
I, I called and spoke to the Mifflenberg police at six fifteen today. There was no discussion of anything other than peaceful, healthy men inhabiting a public building. There was no discussion of any kind of threat at that time. I told them that I was gonna be present, there would be many families, they were gonna be present at the meeting, we're going to walk in and we're gonna have us a meeting unmasked. The Mifflenberg police said that they would give us no trouble, okay? The, the police officer for the Mifflenberg school here that I talked to earlier also reaffirmed that. So.
So there was no.
They, they, they never, they never mentioned any in either of my conversations, one of which was, what time were we here today? Seven o'clock or so. Seven o'clock today approximately was the, the conversation I had with the Mifflenberg school district officer. And there was absolutely no discussion at that time. That's seven o'clock. What is it, twenty minutes later or so that we have a meeting outside? And the officers hadn't known? The school board knew, they all showed up at one time, one united front. No police officers in Mifflenberg, Pennsylvania seemed to be aware that there was a credible threat, but the school board knew it. The school board has never left. They remain. We remain. No one has showed up here concerned about our safety.
Nope.
It's a bunch of BS. It ain't right.
Had there been a credible threat, they'd put us all in danger.
That's a fact.
By not having a, a police presence. It's all hog law.
A credible threat is, we're gonna remove you from the school board. That's what they think a credible threat is. That, that we're gonna get.
Maybe there needs to be a credible threat.
Yeah, that, that's, that is a good threat. Go ahead, Barry.
I just have one simple statement to make. If the masks work, if the masks work, why do we need social distancing? If social distancing works, why do we need vaccine? If the vaccine works, why do they still want vaccinated people to be masked? Seems like none of it works.
If it works, why do we need quarantine?
Anybody else?
We should have been having a meeting like this a long time ago. This school district's been having problems long before coronavirus ever come out. I'll tell you what, it's real bad when you're out at the farm and you don't know what's going on in the school. You call in and you order a ton of feed, they're gonna deliver it to the farm, they show up with ten bags. Ten one-hundred-pound bags, that's supposed to be a ton of feed. All afternoon, I'm wondering how in the world something like this happened. Then the school bus pulls up and my nieces get off the bus. I said, Lou Senda, come here. She come over there, she was going to this school. I said, how many pounds are in a ton? She said, well, I don't know, but I think it'd be a thousand. I said, okay, I'm starting to understand how this happened. I said, Sam, what do you think? How many pounds are in a ton? She said, I'll go with what she said, probably a thousand. And you talk to these children, and they're going to this school and they're graduating, and they do not know how many pounds are in a ton, they don't know how many ounces are in a pound, they do not know how many quarts are in a gallon, they don't know how many pints are in that gallon, they don't, they can't do their multiplication tables, they don't even know, they can't write their name, some of them can't even make change for a dollar. And this is the kind of rule we got going on here, and then they're telling them to wear masks. I mean, we've had problems in this school long before this year come out. They do not teach the Constitution, they don't even allow them to read.
They don't want them to read it.
They don't even allow them to read it, it's not presented. The Constitution is not suitable for teaching anymore. The reason they don't want them to know about the Constitution is so they can walk all over.
Yep.
They're indoctrinating them so the government can make them do anything they want. And that tells you what anybody that's ever read it knows full well, that when that Constitution's gone, you have, you no longer have any rights whatsoever. And this is what they're trying to take away from the next generation. I'm telling you this, if you ask them about World War II, they teach nothing about it. These children don't know what happened. I started out finding out about World War II and what happened, and then I thought to myself, who in the world would put in that case like Hitler in charge? That would bring down the whole country into destruction. And how did he get that job? Well, it turns out he had brown shirts, and they went around like antifa's doing in our country today, burning buildings, beating people that didn't politically agree with them. And the reason why they're not teaching this is because they're pulling it off right in front of your eyes and they don't even want you to know what you're looking at. It's just so disgusting. I'll tell you what, the only thing that's left to do is to take the children and hire a teacher. Get a bunch of families together, hire a teacher, and find a building where you can hold a class, and take the children out of this school, because this school is not fit for your children to be in, whether they have a mask on or not.
Hi, I didn't make a speech or write one, I'm just a kid, so I'm mother. This is my son's first year in any form of school. He goes preschool. He's so excited, he had a great first day, a great first week. And then we all got the news that he had to wear a mask. He doesn't understand. Those children in his class don't understand their form. So what are we teaching our four-year-olds? That their classmates are sick, that the air they breathe is toxic, that this is the new normal? This isn't normal. This isn't America, this isn't what we should be teaching our children. They have a mask over their face, like somebody said, they can't see the teacher or the uncles or the aunts. How are they gonna learn? If a, if a student has a learning disability and they need to read lips, how are they gonna do that? And then, now the kids, their ears are rubbed wrong. For what reason? For what reason? And at my son's school, what doesn't make sense to me is they have to wear masks in the classroom, okay? They don't have to wear masks outside. So you can't tell me those four-year-olds aren't running on the same equipment? They're not playing tag together? They're not touching each other? Does COVID not exist on the playground? When they sit at that, that table and they eat their lunch together and they're talking and food's flying and spit, because we all know how four-year-olds eat? It's not nice? COVID doesn't exist then? When they get breaks, breaks with their masks in class, does COVID take a break? It doesn't make sense to me. And we're just molding our children to do what they want. And at the end of the day, at the end of the day, we are their parents. I am his mother, I gave birth to him, nobody else. I say what is good for my child and what is not. We are our children's voice until they have one of their own. And it's time to speak up for them, because who's gonna do it if not us?
That's right.
Exactly.
Anybody else?
I think this is probably the best school board meeting ever.
Yep.
Probably.
I'm glad I showed up.
Yep, this, this honestly, this is good for us.
Every school board meeting.
We need to let people know this happened, because like you ever said, they need to shade themselves. Right there, you need to let the community know.
If there was a credible threat, why are we in the building?
Here's the deal. I read this on Facebook, and the more I think about it, the truer it sounds. Those that wanna lie to you won't speak to you.
Yep.
Hello, I'm Brian Davis, I graduated here. I have three boys who graduated here. I have two kids here. And what I wanted to say is, I think it should be a choice, very. If you feel comfortable, feel safe by wearing a mask, do it. Don't push it on us. It, it's just not right. It's non-American, it's not being free. Uh, second thing I'd like to say is, I heard through a credible person that actually works within the school district, that they're already making plans that come Thanksgiving, they're gonna shut the school down, and you're gonna all go cyber again, clear till after Christmas, clearing to the new year. I don't know about you people, but I got to sit with my child home and watch them do that cyber. It's a bunch of bullshit, most of it. They spent like two hours and they were done for the day. It's like, how are they learning? They're, they're in school for seven hours or better that they learn, but yet here at home, they spend two hours on a laptop and they're done for the day. They're not getting educated, they're just pushing and pushing so that they become stupid. I hate to say that, but that's so that they become stupid and dependent upon our government so that they can tell them what to do, and that's what they're gonna do.
Not only that.
They won't be able to think for themselves.
They don't learn any social skills that way either.
No, not at all.
There's no socialization.
But what I said about the Thanksgiving deal, that individual told me they didn't want their name brought forward, but he already said that they are making plans within this school to shut it down by Thanksgiving again. but he already said that they are making plans within this school to shut it down by Thanksgiving again. So with that being said, have a good night, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I gotta go.
Oh, okay. Well, Willie's coming up.
I'm gonna give my personal opinion why we have some stupid stuff going with masks. You realize we got midterm elections coming? Non-presidential election? Remember the mail-in ballot stuff? Well, if they have some big pandemic going on now, next, next election, or mail-in ballots and stuff like that, they're.
What do you want to bet? If you're not vaccinated, you're trying to say you have to go mail-in ballot, you're not allowed to be a person.
That's possible, but that's my personal opinion, I would go if I should be a gun right now. You're setting us up.
Life's gonna come, and you know what's gonna happen? Good men are gonna do bad things.
Yep.
They're gonna push us to the end of it. That's the way life is.
All right. Wow.
Sometimes when you just end up saying make me.
Yep.
Seventy-one, seventy-two, I think someone counted in here.
Yeah.
Awesome. That showed up. Need to do that every time.
I put my email on that list.
I want to thank you all personally at the student Mifflinburg, thank you for covering the voice of your opinions. It was very much needed, and I also appreciate all of you.
You're welcome. You're very welcome.
Give me one second here. Thank you, God, you're welcome. Started all this.